Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 21 meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. There are two sign up sheets located in the foyer for tonight's hearing, one for all the attendees and one specifically for those who wish to speak during a case. If you plan to speak or would like to receive follow up information related to these cases, please ensure you sign the appropriate seat. Thank you. Please note this meeting is being recorded as part of the public record. All comments must be captured on the record. If you wish to speak, you must do so using one of the provided microphones. All comments, questions, or responses must be directed to the board. The board will then address them or address or refer them to the appropriate party. Please limit your remarks to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to testify or ask questions during our public hearings must take an oath. When speaking, please do so clearly and directly into the microphone. Can everybody hear me in the back? Thank you. Lastly, we kindly ask you that you silence your cell phones at this time to avoid any disruptions. Thank you for your cooperation. On our, thank you. On our agenda this evening, after review and approval of minutes, we have one case this evening, which is a continuation of CSP 23-0267 for the Evergreen Disposal Concept Site Plan, followed by any new business adjournment. This time I'll let the board members introduce themselves.
Judy Phileas.
Good evening. Lynn Delahaye.
Patty Robrecht.
Howard Thompson.
Joe St. Clair.
Jake Kuzina.
Connor Lockren.
Okay, also with us this evening from Department of Public Works and Transportation, from the Department of Land Use and Growth Management, Brandy Glenn is their deputy director, Megan Higgs Carter is their planning, senior planning specialist. Also with us this evening is our deputy county attorney, Mr. John Sterling Hauser, the acting director of the Department of Public Works and Transportation, Donald Mills, from St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission. We have Anna Wells, and our video media producer this evening is Andrew Beckman. Okay, did everybody have a chance to review the minutes from?
And I have a few corrections if you don't mind, sir.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Connor's name was spelled wrong under members present.
Okay.
I'd also like to add Joe St. Clair was in attendance.
Yes, he was. Okay.
I have no further corrections.
Okay, we have two corrections. Have a motion to accept?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as corrected.
Yes, ma'am. Go. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along, and before we get started, anybody that will be testifying in this case tonight, at this time I'll get everybody sworn in that might be, have questions, statements, or whatever. And if you find out when it comes to public testimony that you want to speak, I'll ask you again, and you can be sworn in later on. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that testimony and responses and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. Good evening, Brandy.
I don't have a presentation.
Okay, Mr. Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members. For the record, Steve Scott with Scott Law Group on behalf of the applicant. We have with us the same cast of characters, Stacy Legana from Lorenzi Dodds and Gannell, Mark Guadnoli as a consultant, Larry Foster from Evergreen, with one major exception, and that is we have Mike Lenhart from Lenhart Traffic Consulting with us. As the chairman indicated, this is a continuation of the hearing that was continued on June We'd like to say that we very much appreciate the Planning Commission and the staff having essentially a separate evening hearing for us for the continuation of this matter, as we appear to be the only thing on the, on the agenda tonight, so thank you very much for that. We are going to dive into the issues that we left hanging when we adjourned on June 23. Most importantly and most specifically is traffic and traffic impacts, and we're going to explain to the best we can where we ran off the, ran off the road last time, no pun intended. I think that generally the consultant that we used for the initial traffic study had some assumptions that were erroneous in a large scale, in a large way, dealing with the timing of traffic to and from the site, and most importantly, the volume of traffic to and from the site. When we adjourned last time, the applicant asked Mr. Lenhart to step in and take a look at this. Mr. Lenhart does a lot of work in St. Mary's County, as you know. Mr. Lenhart's got very, very fresh traffic counts, traffic counts that take into account post COVID and post federal workers going back to, back to the office or their places of work, and also has since its, since its summertime has added a, a factor for the counts that would include the additional volume that would exist during the school year. So he's taken all that into account, and we believe we have accurate information. What happened last time? Again, very erroneous assumptions, we apologize. Nobody on our team caught it. And of course, when you all looked at it, you said, what the heck is going on here? And when we finally took a look at it, we, we agreed with you. But we dropped the ball on it, and we apologize, and we're going to explain exactly the foundation and the basis for which we're basing this new traffic impact analysis. Also, there were some specific questions about the intersection that is there at the Carpenter Lane and Maryland Route 5, the width and, and length of that intersection. We're going to address those issues as well. And then, of course, if you have any other questions, we'll open it up to other questions. Our entire team is ready to testify this evening. So with that, unless you have any preliminary questions, we're going to have Mr. Lenhart explain his new traffic impact analysis. Now, we understand also in terms of timing of getting this information to you, we may have squeezed you on getting this new traffic impact study. I don't know that the Planning Commission has actually seen it. What we agreed with the deputy county attorney and with the staff is we would push on, we were already scheduled for tonight. We think we can explain adequately that there is a greatly improved outlook from the traffic impact analysis that we provided on June 23, and we believe with that explanation that we can gain your support, at least we hope we can for this particular application. So, Mr. Lenhart, if you would dive in and explain what you've done and, and the scope of what you've come up with.
Thank you. Yes, good evening. So I'd like to start.
Could you give us your name, business address?
Yes, Michael Lenhart, Lenhart Traffic Consulting, 231 Naholes Road, Suite 250, Millersville, Maryland 21108.
Thank you, sir.
So I'd like to start with going over a few questions that were raised at the last Planning Commission hearing. And so we kind of took that as a starting point to make sure that we addressed those in our traffic study. One was confirmation that the northbound right turn lane and the southbound left turn lane from Route 5 onto Carpenter Lane was adequate for queuing. And so there is approximately a 500-foot-long northbound right turn lane, that includes the taper and the D cell. There's approximately a 450-foot-long southbound left turn lane with the taper and the D cell. There's over 300 feet of actual queue area in both of those lanes. And when we went through our study and we looked at it, there is sufficient queuing. I'll, I'll get to that. What is the dimensions of the median crossover at Route 5 and Carpenter Lane, and will trucks fit in the crossover without hanging into either northbound or southbound traffic? The Maryland 5 is, at that location, has a 55-foot-wide median. The, there are two types of trucks. There are regular trash trucks, which we've ascertained are about 35 feet from bumper to bumper. Median is 55 feet wide. There is ample room in the median for one of those trash trucks to pull out of Carpenter Lane, sit in the median, wait for a left turn to be able to pull into southbound traffic. That is more than sufficient room for that movement. The other type of truck is a WB67 tractor trailer, and there are 14 of the smaller trash trucks, 35 feet. There are four, maybe five, of the WB67s. The WB67 arrives from the north, all of them. They come from the north, they turn left into the site, and when they leave the site, they all turn right and go north. That is the direction. There is, there will be no tractor trailers making left turns out of this. The applicant has control over that, and, you know, we can assure that there's a condition or whatever needs to be in place to make sure that that does not occur. And so the left turns into the site, there's, there's adequate room for that. The tractor trailer just simply sits in the left turn lane, starts to turn into the median, and then when there's a gap in northbound traffic, they pull into the site.
What was the total length of that tractor trailer?
The tractor, it's a WB67. It's around 67 feet, give or take, within five or 10 feet of that. One of the comments was conduct actual traffic counts, and there was a concern about school, with school being out of session. So what we did, we conducted traffic counts at 5 and Carpenter Lane on July 9 of 2025. That was a Wednesday, the week after 4th of July. And to, to come up with a summer adjustment for schools, Maryland State Highway Administration has a permanent traffic count station on Route 5. When you get across into the Charles County line, it's about halfway up toward Waldorf. That permanent count station, you can go online, you can look at traffic counts from every day of the year. And so we looked at July 9 at that permanent count station, and then we also went back to May 14, which is a Wednesday of this year, when school was in session, seniors were still in session, and we compared those two at that state highway count station. And actually, the traffic counts were almost identical. They were within a percent or two of each other. And so with that in mind, we applied a 5% adjustment factor to the counts we did at Carpenter Lane, just to make sure that we, we had a little fluff in there, and that 5% is consistent with what some other jurisdictions allow, Prince George's County in particular allows summer traffic counts with a 5% adjustment factor. And so we, we've confirmed that the counts are pretty, we really don't need the adjustment factor, we've applied one anyway. What's the impact of the existing and proposed signals along Route 5 on vehicle platooning? So someone raised a question, will, will the new signal at John Dix, or John Knight Drive create platooning? And I'm, I'm uncertain what the status of that signal is, but there are two existing signals. There's one north at Golden Beach Road, there's one south at Route 5. The one south is about a mile south, the one north is about half a mile north. Those signals do create platoons, and so we, we created a vehicle simulation model that we're going to show, that was one of the things that was requested. That simulation model takes into account the signals, north and south, and the platoon, or the gaps that those create in the platoons. And then what is the impact to existing truck traffic that's being removed from the roads? So there, there is some traffic that could possibly be removed from the roads. We didn't take into account any readjustment of traffic or diversions of existing traffic. We just assumed this was all new trips, and that kind of paints the most conservative So with that in mind, we, we did conduct the new counts. The existing levels of service at Maryland 5 and Carpenter Lane is a level of service A in the morning peak hour, existing level of service B in the evening peak hour. B as in boy. This is in the Charlotte Hall area, which has a required level of service of C or better from your zoning ordinance. And again, it's currently a B or better. We added some background traffic in and growth. We added the, the traffic from the site, and the way we calculate, the, part of the erroneous assumptions from the original traffic study, there was some assumptions of there's, there's this many staff, there's this many trucks, we're going to just assume that they all come during the peak hour, and that's what we're going to study. But in discussing it with the applicant and the way they operate, they have, so they have four tractor trailers, possibly five, that will come in, they come in in the morning before 4:00 AM. They pick up full loads, they take those out, they're, they're gone by 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock in the morning. They take that and they dump that, so they're, they're not even hitting the peak hour. They come back around midday, they fill up again, they leave, and they're done. They're, so they don't impact the peak hours, they're all off peak traffic. There are 14 of the trash trucks. 10 of those trucks will make two trips to the station per day. Four of those trucks make one trip to the station per day. Again, the, the staff arrives very early in the morning, they load up, they're out before peak hour begins. We made an assumption that maybe some of those trucks might come back a little bit earlier if they've got a closer route or whatever, so we did assign some traffic in the morning peak hour, not substantial. In the evening peak hour, the, the site is basically closed around 3:30. So when people get back and leave, they're leaving before the, the 4:00 to 7:00 peak hour begins. Traffic on Route 5 is still getting heavy, 3:00 to 4:00. So, you know, we did, what we studied, assuming the return of the trucks and the employees and leaving of the employees, we did look at what would happen when they come back in the afternoon, because, you know, 3:00 to 4:00 traffic is still pretty heavy. So we wanted to make sure that we included that in our traffic study. It generates a total of 15 trips in the morning peak hour based on these assumptions, 42 trips in the evening peak hour. That's less than 50 peak hour trips. The county practice is if it's greater than 50 trips, you require a traffic impact study. If it's less than 50 trips, a traffic impact study is not required. So in, in theory, a traffic impact study should not even be required for this. One was conducted and presented at the last hearing. There were a lot of questions, so we didn't want to come in and say, you know, it's less than 50 trips, we're not, we don't need a study. We wanted to make sure we had this on the record, answered your questions. But I just, I just wanted to note that a traffic study should not be required for this. And the results are that it still operates at a level of B in, in the PM peak hour, A in the AM peak hour, which is better than the level of service C requirements. So I, I'm sure you have questions. I'm happy to take whatever questions.
Am I having questions, Mr. Lenhart? You spelled it out pretty good, sir.
Just, if I could.
Just one question. The AM hours, again, I know the, the facility closes at 3:30. What time do people come to work and, is that, 3:00 to 5:00, wasn't it?
My notes in our team meetings and discussing this with the employees begin arriving around 4:30 AM in the morning, and then they load up and they leave, and then they get back around 3:30, and then they leave. That, that may vary a little bit, but approximate.
So to emphasize a, a couple of points that Mike made, Mike, again, there's, taking into account the data and the assumptions that you made, there's no degradation in the level of service.
That's correct.
With adding this, this facility to the, to the Charlotte Hall area. Also, you heard Mike say that the tractor trailers, the WB67, would come from the north and then proceed out of the site to the north. So remember, there are two types of trucks going to this facility, one of them being a trash truck, of course. Trash trucks will leave empty, come back loaded, and Larry, if I get any of this wrong, let me know. And then the material is sorted onsite, and then it's the tractor trailers that are loaded, and they take the material north to, to landfills and other stations.
Northern Virginia.
Northern Virginia.
And Fredericksburg.
So we're willing to proffer, of course, that tractor trailers will come to the site from the north and leave from the site going north. We know there was some concern about using that intersection and a tractor trailer trying to queue up in that intersection and go south, and certainly we, we share that concern. These are haulers that Larry works with quite a bit and has faith in and trust in, and certainly controls based on his arrangements and contracts with them. And as we mentioned in the last meeting, there really is not a, a reason for them to go south anyway. One of the other things we said is we thought that there may be some truck traffic taken off of the roads. We haven't really taken that into account in the traffic study, as Mike indicated, but we think with the transfer station and the consolidation of the loads going out of the county to Northern Virginia and other places where these, this, this waste ultimately ends up, that there may be fewer trucks leaving the county with, with those loads. We believe that's accurate, but we have not taken that into account in the traffic impact We, we know that this is sort of unprecedented, where we sort of switch out traffic impact studies with you midstream in the continuation of a hearing. But again, back to the assumptions that were made, and Larry, I just want to have you just mention or talk about these just for a second. So in the initial traffic impact analysis, the timing of the vehicle trips was way off. There was an assumption that the trucks and the workers would come and go at peak hours, and as you heard Mike testify, that that's just not the case. And Larry, once again, most everything is coming at non-peak hours, right? And going.
That's correct. Yeah, the idea, we want to be as productive as possible. Our trucks run at $145 an hour, our trash trucks do. So the last thing we want is to be stuck in traffic. And a lot of the, the original information came as Chuck Marsh, who we can get on the phone, I talked to him earlier, he, we were consulting buildings, giant facilities like the, like St. Louis and Dallas and places like that. So he's assuming that these facilities are basically trucks in, trucks out all day long. And he didn't really realize this is just a private operation, right now 14 trucks. So once we started to talk about that, and I wasn't aware at the time with, you know, at that point, you know, I did not really understand that he didn't, we didn't really communicate on those facts. So, you know, we learned the hard way when we got here of where we stood, so that's.
So that's, that's the second prong, the second prong of our incorrect assumptions on June 23. One was timing of the, of the trips to and from the, the site. The other was the volume. And again, as Larry mentioned, the volume is, was inflated unreasonably high in the initial traffic impact study. And in fact, in talking to Larry, he says that the site as it's proposed and as we're seeking in this concept site plan approval could never produce that kind of volume, the volume that was assumed in the initial traffic impact analysis. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's what we talked about last meeting, that there's not enough homes in Southern Maryland to even accomplish. If we did every single thing, it wouldn't equate to the kind of tonnage that they were assuming we were going to do. It's not possible.
So being physically impossible to, to get to those kind of volumes, in terms of the service that the county needs, but also physically in terms of the, of the site and the improvements that are proposed to be built at the site, that site just could not handle those kind of volumes.
No, there's nowhere we could do improvements. If we wanted to build a second transfer station, two more lanes, there's just not enough room. So we couldn't build anything more on the current site. It's not possible.
And the volumes that you provided, Mr. Lenhart, are, are the accurate volumes that this transfer station can?
Absolutely. I have, I have the documentation here from Charles County and Calvert County of our tonages last month. June is the heaviest month of the year for us. Kids getting out of school, unfortunate people put lawn trimmings and stuff like that. So these are our heaviest months of the year. That's where I got our information from, in the truck trips for the tractor trailers. So where it stands right now, I went by the heaviest month of the year this year. So if the transfer station turned on tomorrow morning, those would be the exact numbers you would.
And, Mr. Lenhart, you said to me in your analysis, the level of service and the counts that you did, in theory, you could actually double or triple the assumed volumes and still not degrade the level of service of the intersections and, and really still not affect your, your conclusions.
That's correct, because almost everything happens outside of the peak hours.
Questions on traffic?
Does anybody have any more questions on traffic?
We tried to be as complete as we could. The other thing, and just going back to generally, I think we, of course, presented the, the intent and function of this facility on June 23, but if you have any questions about, generally about the operation or how it works, once again, I think we mentioned this, but no hazardous waste, no toxic substance, nothing of that nature is taken in at this site or is handled at this site. You've got commercial and residential household, household and.
That's it.
And business waste.
That's it.
There was a mention of some trucks coming down from Charles County with trash, and we've talked at length about that among our team, and that is actually happening now, and I think Larry can explain why and how, but we think that this transfer station being in Charlotte Hall will be a much lower impact than, than the, the way that the, the trash from, or at least some of the trash from Charles County comes through the St. Mary's County roads at this point. So Larry, if you could explain that.
Sure. We have trucks that already operate in Charles County, the edges in front of Charles County that pick up trash there, come into St. Mary's County, and the one thing we hate the most is going over the Southern Bridge, Route 4 into Lusby. That unfortunately, that's the quickest way for us to get there. So you've got a 60,000-pound truck going over a two-way bridge currently, as we speak, multiple times, and all that goes away. So from a safety perspective, trucks are coming in a mile, and, you know, or they might go south for a little ways, pick up trash, and then come back, but they're not having to go all the way down, so there's less traffic on the road. It's an hour if you're picking up trash in that part of Charles County to go south, pick up trash, and get to Calvert. It's an, it's almost an hour to Lusby, you know, in a trash truck. So a lot of that goes away. They can go down, pick up trash, and come right back. So there, and just another factor, there's none of these giant trucks really on that, you know, two-lane bridge anymore. So that's.
The, excuse me, the other aspect being, Larry, that the trash that does come into St. Mary's County from out of county is really just a, a very temporary stop. It's sorted and it goes right back out.
It, it could be in, sometimes less than an hour, an hour or two, you know, it hits the floor, you know, it's sorted into piles, and then it's put in a truck. You know, it's sorted into piles and then it's put in a truck and shipped right out. So that's, that's the daily operation we're trying to accomplish. So it's not, and it's against the law to have it sitting on the floor at night. And the EPA will be there with the site, you know, the EPA is very strict on what we do. And the last thing I want to do is lose our license. So they will be there inspecting, knocking on the door, asking to come in. That's just part of their operation. So by no chance, there's going to be trash sitting on that floor at any time. It's not feasible.
I have a question for you. If there's not going to be any, you said the site is not big enough to handle future increase?
Yes, sir.
That leads me to believe as a businessman that why would you build a building that could be over capacity in a few years? Or will there some point in time where you'd be increasing the number of trucks going there to compensate for not having to build another unit?
Trucks, well, ideally, and we talked about this before, you know, with the blessing of the county, at some point, I could ask companies like Republic who, or Shoreline, or do the exact same thing we do as far as pick up trash in Charles going all the way down over Route Four. With the blessing of the county saying, we would like to have a couple, you know, name the company, come and dump, you know, at our facility there. Does that answer your question?
I guess my question still is, is that if you're, at what time does your building reach capacity?
It would be like we were talking about earlier, it would be, I mean, and this is a legitimate, I'd say thirty, I mean, I can't, thirty, forty years? I couldn't imagine the, the way, the numbers avoid the way this thing is built out, you know? It's, I can't find, we're, it's a, excuse my language, it's a fly on a horse's butt right now. It, as far as the capacity, if you had trucks running in there, there's just not enough houses and not enough trash in Southern Maryland to do that. It just doesn't make sense currently. And I couldn't see any time in the future.
So just, uh, just to follow that up, if you don't mind, Mr. St. Clair. That said, you have worked closely with, um, county facilities. Is it DPW that does the, uh, runs the landfill?
Waste Management runs the landfill for Calvert County and Charles County runs their own.
Okay, okay. But your facility has already been taken into account and is needed. And we mentioned this on June twenty-third. It's already been incorporated into the county's solid waste management plan?
Yes, yes.
As a necessary facility to, uh, serve the county for years to come and to help alleviate the, the pressure that's being put on the services within the county by, uh, by the growth that is occurring.
Yes, there's a benefit to the county, uh, without a doubt. You know, every county, surrounding county has something similar, either a landfill or a transfer station. And the need is there. Um, the gentleman's here with the Public Works Department. It's, it's in this solid, tenure solid waste program. So, you know, the, the powers that be with the county see a need for something like this in the county.
And just to, just to emphasize that again, uh, it's a solid waste management plan. It's mentioned in, on page five dash four and five dash eight. Short-term recommended actions begin use of the newly constructed privately owned and funded solid waste transfer station located in Charlotte Hall, Maryland, which is a reference to, of course, to this facility.
That's referenced in the comprehensive plan?
The Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, or I'm sorry, not Waters, Solid Waste Management Plan. Two thousand twenty-three to two thousand thirty-two. Adopted, adopted August of two thousand twenty-two.
I had heard you mentioned that before at the last meeting.
Yeah. So, um, other questions, other concerns? Yes, ma'am.
I just have one question. Uh, the county has a lot of local transfer stations like Valley Lee, you know, different places where we take our, um, our trash. There is the big blue or whatever color dumpster sitting there. Is that what this company is picking up and taking away? All of those type of sites? Not your trash trucks, but your, your big trucks when you come in, are you pulling?
My big trucks look similar today. Yes, ma'am. They look, some, some of those are compactor trucks that are, we call them parkouts. We have right now, it's not a true transfer station. It's called a parkout. That's what you have for, for local citizens to go drop off their trash. Ours are pretty much, I would say, the same thing. They're the same shape and size. Ours aren't compacted, you know, because the ones you have now are compacted.
So you're not necessarily the, the company that right now that's going around and hauling that's, the, when they get full, hauling them away?
No, ma'am. This is a company called Big Dog Transport that does it now.
Okay. We have, uh, nothing further, but our entire team, of course, is, uh, available for questions, if you have questions.
I want to go over the simulation to show.
Yeah. If you're ready to do that, yes.
Sure, certainly. Uh, so we looked at the morning and evening peak hour. Now, this is, um, bear with me. The morning peak, so we conducted traffic counts from six-thirty to nine-thirty in the morning and from four till seven in the evening. Uh, and we, we look at that entire three-hour period and we calculate the peaks at sixty minutes. The morning peak sixty minutes was seven to eight AM. The evening peak sixty minutes was four to five PM. So those are the hours that we're looking at. Is this the morning peak hour?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, this is the morning peak hour. And this is with the total traffic volumes, includes the, uh, transfer station here. And this is operating, I think, at four times travel speed. So we sped it up a little bit so we can watch more in a little less time.
A lot of this is controlled between the light system too, right?
Yes, so the, there's a signal at, um, Route, um, six, yeah, thank you.
Route six?
Six, yeah.
There's a signal, uh, to the north at Golden Beach Road. It's about a half-mile north and then the signals, Route, uh, six signals about a mile south. We have them built into this simulation. So when they turn red and they stop traffic, uh, it creates gaps in traffic that can be used by, uh, people turning in and out of Carpenter Lane. And, um, you can see that, you know, for the most part, uh, things operate pretty well here. There's, there are, um, we did do a queuing analysis as well as part of this simulation. If you were to watch this for a full hour, and I think this simulation alone would be about a, a ten-minute run. But the queuing analysis showed that the southbound left turn had a maximum queue of one vehicle. And the, uh, the northbound right turn, there is no queue because that, that, you don't have to stop and give way to anybody else. As you're turning right in, you just slow down and turn right. And there's a trash truck right now that just turned left out on the southbound Route Five. Uh, the maximum queue exiting Carpenter Lane at the stop sign, uh, was two hundred and twenty-five feet. So that's about eight vehicles, eight. But as, that's the maximum queue, as you can see, the majority of the time, there's really not much queuing. So that was the full morning peak hour and then the evening peak hour. Randy? There's a trash truck turning in from the north. Now, what this doesn't show are tractor trailers because they don't occur during the peak hour. So they're not going to show up here. But, um, we, I did model it, um, in one scenario, uh, and it operates fine. You know, the right turns out and the left turns in, uh, there's, there's room. They, they don't, because of the nature of those turns, they don't stick out into traffic. And, um, again, they occur off-peak when volumes are much lower on Route Five.
Mr. Lenhart?
Yes.
Uh, the northbound lane, the deceleration lane, when you're going to turn right into Carpenter Lane?
Yes.
I'm sorry. The, uh, northbound lane, when you turn right onto Carpenter, how long is that deceleration lane?
Uh, it's, bear with me. It's a total of five hundred feet long. It's about a hundred and fifty-foot taper and three hundred foot, uh, full width.
My only concern with that is that someone's going to use that as a third lane.
Uh, I don't, I, I understand the concern. I don't believe that they would. That's a pretty standard length for deceleration lanes. And then there's a, there's a very short acceleration lane as you turn right out on the Route Five, but it's marked as a short acceleration lane. I think you'd have a very difficult time trying to use that as a through lane, a third lane.
And the, uh, traffic light that's going to go south of Carpenter Lane, that's not there, you don't have any information on?
I don't have the details on when that would go in or how it would operate. And so I, I didn't want to include it in here because I'm just not certain at this time. But based on what's existing today, there are gaps that are created by the signals at Route Six.
There are gaps between those two?
Let me ask you a question then, Mr. Lenhart. Just your opinion, now, not, not basing on facts, but that light will be impacting, I'll say, the northbound traffic. So at John Knight Drive, so that would actually give another little extra gap.
It, it would, it would make the gaps even better because it's closer. When, when you're a mile south at Route Six, the gaps that are created, once the signal turns green at Route Six, people accelerate at different speeds and the platoon spreads out a bit. Uh, when the signal goes at John Knight, that platoon's going to be tighter because it's closer and, um, vehicles have less time to, to, to spread out. And I, I would reiterate that, again, a traffic study is not, um, not required for this because it generates fewer than fifty peak hour trips. But we do have one that we provided. I did discuss with, um, Mr. Harper and Mr. Mills today. We, we spoke for about a half hour and kind of went through the guts of the, the report and the findings and the details. And, uh, I don't want to put any words in their mouths. Uh, I'll, I'll let Mr. Mills speak for himself. I think that they were in agreement with the general findings, although they said that they have not reviewed it in detail and would not be able to review it in detail before tonight. Although we did provide an APF form, they have that and they, they could sign that if the board, uh, decides to approve tonight.
Mr. Scott, you said you had no problem, your applicant has no problem with that if we put that as a condition, that the traffic impact study and the APF form are approved by?
Uh, correct, Mr. Chair, yes. Those are reasonable conditions.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Good.
Appreciate you. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Lenhart?
No.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Scott?
Uh, nothing else from me unless you have questions.
Nobody's piping up, so I guess nobody has any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time then, I will, um, open it up to public testimony. We have some people here on the sign-in sheet. I'll call them up and then if there's anybody else, um, you'll have a chance to just raise your hand at the end. I'll, I'll ask and, um, we'll get you sworn in. Also, if, um, when, when the speakers come up, I will ask them if they took the oath. Okay, first person I have that is on the speaking is Michael Morgan.
They've all passed. They're here for a merit badge, so if they could talk to a commissioner at the end.
Surely, surely, be glad to help them out. Glad to have them too. Future, future planning commission members right there, sitting in front of us, ladies and gentlemen.
I hope they get here soon.
Yeah, we're, no comment.
Leave it alone.
Billy Fitzgerald.
Speed him a lot.
And what was the second, the, the, Michael Morgan, what was the second one's name, please?
That's Owen Morgan.
Owen, okay.
Good evening.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure his name was on the record. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Fitzgerald. And I know I got to swear you in. I was looking at you.
My name's Billy Fitzgerald and I live at three-nine-nine-six-one Sasse Fras Lane, Leonardtown, Maryland, two-zero-six-five-zero. I just came here tonight to support my friend Larry Foster. I was instrumental in helping them secure their property up there. Many years ago, he made me aware that the facilities that they had, uh, where they were in Waldorf were, were not, uh, anywhere near satisfactory. They went along, uh, sojourned to try to find something. And so, uh, I feel comfortable that they'll do a good job for, for the county and provide a good service. I also like to talk about the Boy Scouts back there. When I was coming in the door, they were signing their piece of paper. And I said, "What are y'all doing here?" And he said, "Uh, we're going to ask some questions." I said, "Are you for this project or are you against this project?" And they said, "No, that, that, um, we were working for our merit badge." And one of the merit badges, uh, that they're going for is that they have to attend a public meeting of some ti- type and then do an interview. And so I asked them if they would have an interest in interviewing Mr. Mr. Foster. And I think they were, were tickled to death. So they're going to interview, I think, one of you folks, uh, back there. And Larry's going to go ahead and grant them a, a nice little interview and help them, uh, get their, their merit badges. And I think, which one's going for your, for your Eagle Scout?
Wow.
So, uh, thank you very much.
Any questions, Mr. Fitzgerald? Thank you, sir. Thank you for attending. Was there anybody else?
Thanks for all you do.
Well, we're glad to do it for you. Was there anybody else? Okay, then at this time, I'll close public testimony and open it back up. You don't have anything from?
Uh, I have nothing further, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay. I think they answered our questions pretty good.
Yeah.
Mr. Lenhart did a fine job showing us to and from. Mr. Foster is going to take care of the, the, the northbound traffic. But coming from the north and going to the north. And, um, the applicant did a good job of presenting it. Mr. Scott, thank you, sir. Anybody have any comments? I know that there are, if we, if we do move into, if we decide that we're going to approve it, uh, there was a couple of conditions, well, actually three, the, I, I call it the Van Kirk, uh, condition that we always put on there. I don't think there's any improvements that need to be done on the entryway, but we normally put that on there anyway, just in case. And the other one was the, uh, signage for the tractor trailers to turn right and, and only on leaving the, on, only on leaving the site. And the approval of a traffic impact study in the adequate public facilities by the Department of Public Works and Transportation. Anybody have anything to add?
No, I appreciate the effort to go back and do, uh, this traffic study because everyone here knows how bad that area can be. It may not have been required, but it is appreciated. I'll just say when I, I mean, that was the main issue last time. But when I look at everything that they've, that's, all of the reports, the, uh, the efforts that have gone into the stormwater management plans, um, have been extensive. The study by Bob Taylor Engineering, I believe it was, from the soil samples, the erodible versus not erodible. You know, all seems in line with that. I mean, again, there's two, it meets all the requirements in the comprehensive plan and the zoning with two exceptions that would have to be addressed, um, in addition to approval by DPWT of the traffic. But it's pretty solid. So, I mean, I'm just expressing my opinion at this point, but that's what I see.
I just have one thing, and I, I just would like you to address again, because it was in one of the letters that we received, the noise complaints. There, there was a concern about noise.
Okay.
Remember, we addressed it the other, but could you just go over that one more time?
Yes, ma'am. If you look at when the trash is going to be dumped on the floor, it's, it's in the middle of the day. So, you know, we have to have everything up. So there's not going to be any operational running at ten o'clock at night or, or four o'clock, three o'clock in the morning. Trucks leave, that's it. So it'll be every, you know, anything that'll be dumped. The loudest thing that will happen is the trash being dumped. That's not very loud. And it's in a contained building. So when you're looking, if you're looking, you know, you're about roughly a little bit over, it's a, over a thousand feet.
To feet, yeah.
Close this house. Yes, ma'am. And there's woods buffering it, so by, and I've already talked to the neighbor, um, the electrical company. So that's why we put the building on the other side. When I purchased, I went and met with him. I said, you know, is there anything that would concern you with having a transfer station? And he said, "I would like you to have it on the opposite side." And we didn't have any problem with that. We said, "Sure." You know, we're, like, said, "We want to be a part of the county. We don't want..." we're, like, we want to be a part of the county. We don't want to bother anybody about what we're doing, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Why, do you have anything further?
Just to make sure they are loading inside the building, correct?
Yes, sir, we have to. Yes, sir.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Okay, in the matter of concept site plan number CSP 23-0267, Evergreen Disposal Development, having accepted staff report and having made a finding that objectives of Section 60.6 of the comprehensive zoning ordinance have been met, I move that the concept site plan be approved with the following conditions. Any road improvements required by the state and county must be concurrent with the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. B is to obtain the variances from the Board of Appeals from the following requirements. CZO, Section 51.3.96A3B, new facilities shall be horizontally, horizontally located 1,500 feet from the nearest home or institutional building. The facility is 1,000 feet from the nearest home, so they have to reduce the required 1,500 feet to 1,000. CZ, Section 51.3.96A7, solid waste of resource recovery facilities shall have a commercial entrance and be located on a road with a designated major collector or a higher classification. Facility is located on Carpenter Lane, which is classified as a minor collector, to allow the facility to be located off a minor collector. And then, C, obtain permission from commissioners of St. Mary's County to create their access from the commissioners right away. Remember that one. Then, did you want to add? Yes. The north?
So?
Want to add the traffic study?
Signage for?
Oh, signage for T?
For tractor-trailer.
Tractor-trailers to turn right only when leaving the site. And then, the condition approval of, you've got terrible writing, buddy.
I can read it. Traffic impact study, adequate public facilities.
Okay.
Well, you can't read it.
I could.
I'm just trying to help.
If we can't smile, we can't, okay. Got a second by Ms. Della Haye. Oh, do roll call. Jay, you're the first batter up tonight.
Aye.
Mr. Sinclair?
Aye.
Patty?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
Also vote aye. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Take care of your neighbors.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you for the special meeting.
Mr. Lenhart, thank you for doing everything this evening.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate you. Our two Boy Scouts, would you like to talk to us while we're in session?
That would be good.
Yeah, come on up, come on up to the front. You'd just well be on TV. Tell you what, come on up here and sit at the desk, you two. Get, get yourself in front of a microphone.
Look, he, he even carries his cell phone.
He's ready. He's, he's, he's a, he's a future man, right here, y'all. Could you give us your name, please?
Oh, my name is Michael Morgan.
And your name, sir?
My name is Owen Morgan.
Thank you, sir. Okay, you got us. We're yours. What can we do for you?
All right.
I don't do this very often either, so you'll have, you'll have to bear with me.
I don't do this very often either, so, thank you. So, I'm not very knowledgeable on this matter, but one of my questions was, I was trying to use context clues to figure out everything that's happening within the, because you guys were approving the site plan, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, will the site be used as a landfill or more as a storage for trucks and transport? Or a mix of both? How does it, how does that work?
Any of the board members want to answer, or you want to let me do it?
I'll take that.
But, yeah, go ahead.
So, my understanding is with this facility, it is merely a staging area. So, they're going to have the trash trucks that are coming out to your neighborhoods, picking up your trash cans. They bring everything to this facility where it gets sorted, loaded onto the tractor-trailers, and then taken out of the county to, I believe they said, Northern Virginia or Fredericksburg area.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's really not a landfill?
Oh, you, you got, you got the A-team coming in here now, buddy, so they're coming, they're coming to answer your questions in case we can't. They, they came back just for y'all. Y'all, hey, y'all are top of the line. I've never had this happen. Scares me when I see all the applicants come back in the room.
He, he asked a really good question before you got in here.
He asked what you were going to do on the site, where you, was it a landfill or were you going to just transfer the trash? You want to come up here, Mr. Foster?
Yeah, thank you.
We don't get chances like this very often, so.
So, the site will have a transfer station on it, and what a transfer station is basically a big metal building, and it's going to have different lanes. And where the lanes are, where the trucks will come in and dump in the assigned spots, then there will be a bucket truck that moves the trash to certain areas, and there'll be a tractor-trailer. So, we put all the trash into the tractor-trailer. It's loaded, and it'll be going to different facilities. It can go to Lorton, which is owned by ReWorld. It's like Incinerator. You have Lorton, Eisenhower. You have Fredericksburg, which is a massive landfill. Even Wheela Brader in Baltimore. There's a couple of different facilities will take the trash to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Owen, you have a question?
Yes. Where will the funds for this project be coming from?
That is a great question. So, we are financing it. We have a bank that we use for, you know, our trash trucks, trash cans, things like that. We did what's called a performa, so we showed them how much tonnage we do, what is the cost of the local landfills, things like that, the details, and the transportation costs that we estimated. And we took it to our bank and said, "This makes, they said, "This makes sense. It's a good project." So, they're giving us the funds through the bank to finance it.
Okay.
Good question.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
I'm just going to look here real quick.
Okay.
I think, at least concerning the site plan, I think that's it. I just had some other personal questions to ask some of the staff, like...
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
How do you, just for any of you, how do you become a planning commissioner? And I guess, what exactly do you do?
Got the easy question up front.
Yeah, really. Connor?
Connor, you got out of that one.
Well, you have to have an interest. You have, have to have an interest in your county, how things are built, what's going, going to be built. I know myself, I had a, I had an issue 30, 30-some years ago, and I decided that I would get on a board and, on the, on the appeals board at the time. And I've been back and forth between the appeals board and the planning commission since then. It's just, you have to take an interest in the county. You want to, you know, you want to make sure you do things right, but you want to make sure the neighbors are taken care of when you build these things. You want to make sure they're done smart, they're done safe, as you hear with the traffic. You know, there's always traffic in St. Mary's County. Say, you know, Mr. Lenhart comes in here and, and shows us how it is. I won't say we always agree with him, but sometimes, you know, there's, there's always two sides to a coin, but he always brings forth all the good information that we need to make our decision on that. And I'm just speaking for myself. I just, I take an interest in the county, and it took off from there.
Okay, thank you.
With myself. I've been around a long time.
Judy?
The first comprehensive plan, I served on it. The Lexington Park Master Plan, I served on it. Also, served six years for Water and Sewer Authority for St. Mary's County. But my background was agricultural, and the county commissioners actually appointed me because of my background agricultural. They wanted to make sure there was representation of our rural area, also to inform the farmers where development was going to go, and how do we not control development but guide it to go in the direction we need to go, where the facilities are, such as water, sewer, roads, schools, and all that. So, it's good to have a background in it, but most of us are appointed by the county commissioners to serve a niche because of our background and what we did. I'm a businessman. I've earned several businesses, connected aerospace, very wide background, everything from that to wedding venues to, so we're working with the soil and the land that's around us and order protect us. Just remember, St. Mary's County is a peninsula, and we're surrounded by water. Our tributaries, we're very, very unique, so we also need to protect that.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, any other questions, gentlemen?
No.
This was a pleasure.
No, thank you, sir.
This was, it's, it's a pleasure.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Okay.
If, if that's your dad back there, he ought to be proud of y'all. Good luck on getting your badges and, and move forward, and then someday.
Come back.
Oh, and you can watch this, you can go on YouTube, St. Mary's County Planning Commission, put in the date, and watch this in case you need to get any further information from it.
Okay, I think I will, just to look back and take some more notes on the meeting.
Can I ask where you go to school?
This, this coming August, I will be going to, I will be an incoming freshman at St. Mary's Reichen.
Oh.
Very good. How about you, sir?
Carly, I go to Archbishop Neil's school in La Plata.
Very good.
Very nice.
Very good.
Well, we appreciate y'all coming in. Anytime.
Thank you. And encourage the younger ones, as you know, to come and participate in this as well. You don't have to go after a badge. Just know what's going on in your community would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a, it was a great experience. Thanks for, thanks for letting us speak.
Glad to do it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, okay. We adjourn. Thank you. Yeah, that was good.